Hey, I'm going to call the board of the Lex Public Schools School Committee meeting of April 11th, 2022. I guess I need to shut something off. And the first order of business is the hearing of visitors, and we have Morris's fifth grades for the first time since February of 2020. We're delighted. You have Ms. Monday, Ms. Welsh, Ms. Elaine. So I don't know whether, we don't have a microphone, so to speak, but do you want to get a little bit closer to the owl? That might help. I don't think we can play into the sound quality of that phrase.
Good evening. Morris Elementary is a place for no hate. It is a place where all students thrive. We are all a community where we are all included, respected, and treated equally.
In the fall, we, the fifth graders, agreed to help create a place for no hate. We agreed to get the whole school involved. The first thing we had to do was inform the rest of the school of our goal. The school gathered for an assembly. We shared and explained the promises of the No Haste, Place for Hate project.
Together, we designed posters with each promise displayed. After the meeting, we asked all students to pledge by signing that they would promise to do their best to treat everyone fairly, promise to do their best to be kind to everyone, even if they are not like them, promise if they see someone being hurt or bullied, they will tell the teacher, promise to help others to feel safe and happy at school, promise to be heart of Morris, no place for hate.
After the assembly, we got to work. With weekly lessons we learned through the second step curriculum, we are learning to be role models of inclusion, respect, and equality. We work with our teachers to fulfill the promises we pledged. In the late fall, we each chose a quote of kindness and with the help of Ms. Stoller, our teacher, we drew a self-portrait displaying our quote of kindness underneath. We then visited the younger grades and shared the quote and explained the meaning behind the message.
Late winter, Jen Daly, a licensed social worker, led a fabulous friendship assembly for grades two through five, talking about diversity and inclusion. On the 90th day of school, fifth graders identified 90 differences we experienced at Morris and explained how to celebrate these differences. A bulletin board on the second floor displays the differences discussed.
After our second step bullying unit, the fifth graders decided to march against bullying on March 20th. We designed posters that had anti-bullying messages. As we marched through the halls, we reviewed how a person who was bullied can get help, recognized, reported, and refused. We also talked about how someone can be a helpful bystander by respecting, including standing up and reporting. May 13th is no place for hate, nationwide day of celebration.
We will celebrate our work toward making Morris no place for hate.
Thank you. I see that. And May 13th? This is it?
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Let me see if there's anybody home. Alrighty. As I said, you're welcome this day, but I thought I'd take this opportunity.
Great job.
I wanted to ask some questions that I was afraid that they would freeze, so I didn't. But I would come and ask that at school sometime. And I was like, oh, they're so prepared. Ask them questions, they'd write.
Okay, so we have the school committee meeting minutes of March 14th, 2022.
I'll move to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2022.
I will second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing done. We'll call for a roll call vote. Orin Cass?
Orin Cass, aye.
Bob Munch?
Bob Munch, aye.
Christine Morrow?
Christine Morrow, aye.
Veronica Fenton, aye. Bob Juan, aye. Okay, so we'll move on to super discuss report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have quite a lengthy report, but I'll try not to make it too long. So we're going to start with our highlights and recognitions. First and foremost, I wanted just to highlight the fantastic international fair that was held at LMHS on March 23rd. It's been so long ago, but it was a fantastic night. We had a great attendance. Wonderful crowd. Students put together excellent displays of different countries across the globe. And we had a fundraiser that was organized by some of our students to support efforts in Ukraine. Maybe buttons and other pieces to sell, so it was a fun night for all. And we also had a host of cultural exhibitions in the Duffa Theater, including Irish dance, drumming, salsa. And so it was a really wonderful way to come together as a community and celebrate acknowledgements of those who haven't the globe and all corners of it. Our next sort of recognition is, I'd like to recognize a wonderful event that happened last Friday, April 8th. We had a senior retreat for students from LMHS. And this is something that we host annually in conjunction with our business partners. And I just want to say a special thanks to all of those who came together to put together this event. So it was an event that lasted for morning until the end of the school day. With breakfast for the students, a lunch for the students, and then learning sessions in between. Spinning the gamut from self-defense, the financial literacy, to mindfulness. It was a great day for the kids. They combined sessions saying how fun this was. Usually that's something you hear people leaving the finance session saying. And so we were excited to hear that. And at the end of the day, the kids were just really excited after our ice cream social, thanking all the folks who contributed to the day. So special thanks was out to our hosts, Shakespeare and Company. Adams Community Bank, who provided the lunch. Kimball Farms, who also pitched in for lunch and also for the ice cream bar at the end. Lee Bank, who provided bottled water as well as food products and supplies. Our keynote speaker, Tariq Pinkston, who works at Miraboll Resorts. rave reviews about his keynote and a desire to maybe bring him back for other motivational speaking opportunities at the school and other opportunities to integrate mindfulness wellness fitness. Jackie McNich and Testortino from Adams Bank. And Tina Bartini and Allison Brennan from Lee Bank. They partnered for, again, the session that I talked about students coming out raving from, which was a student financial and cybersecurity learning opportunity where they kind of have a game show where they give students a hypothetical amount of money and the students have to make a series of decisions that one would have to make once they leave the home and have to manage your own finances. And that had everything to do with shopping, making purchases, also thinking about financial products such as credit cards, how checking accounts kind of work, not necessarily a checkbook, but the constant of inflows and outflows. The idea of having a ledger to track those finances. Also getting paychecks and thinking about then using the money from those paychecks to pay for things like insurance and car payments. So it was a really, I think, wonderful lesson for the students. I think some of them were surprised when they had negative balances at the end. And so it was a series of kind of would you rather questions, and I think our kids learned a lot, so that was a lot of fun. Lori Carroll at Canyon Ranch offered a stress management session for the students. Rachel Cogswell, who works with us over at the high school, offered a session of one of my strengths. Kayla Bresser from Canyon Ranch provided a yoga learning opportunity. Laura Lipowski and Jay Williams from Kimball Farms provided a food demonstration on how to cook and care for yourself beyond just pizza. Rashad Avli Singh, a salsa dancing presentation, again, basically rave reviews that folks gave us after the salsa from International Fair, so in fact, a popular man. And Kevin Maximilian and Jed Hall offered a self-defense course for both men and females. So great day all the way around. And so we were just really fortunate to have these partnerships with our campus and community. And we were thankful for that day for our kids. Next.
Yeah, I just said nice. Oh, sorry.
The next recognition is our LMHS music program. So on Saturday, we had five students participate in the National Educators Association Western District Music Festival. This festival took place this year at two sites. The concert band, the jazz ensemble performed that Minicham Regional High School in Lowryham. The chorus orchestra performed that at Eastland Middle High School. And the festival this year took place in a single day rather than the customary two days. In the future, Mr. Kane hopes to be back to a typical two-day program in the years to come. Students who represented LMHS, the chorus, Virginia Collins, Ben Jolly, and Michael Maximilian, the orchestra, Juan and Vicky, and concert band PJ Fee. On related note, the sixth and seventh grade band concert is tonight at seven o'clock in the Duffa Theater. So twenty minutes now, that event also kicks off. It'll also be live, for those who can attend, and if you go to our social media site, you can get the link for the launch. Spring sports is underway. We just turned our second week of competition, believe it or not. And this brand, we're offering baseball crew, boys and girls cross, softball, tennis, and track and field. To extend a warm welcome to our new coaches, we have Lorna Herman, joining as a head tennis coach for the girls' team. Mike Downer, the assistant varsity baseball coach, and Tom Renting, who is heading up the track and field team. We have a cross at that afternoon. Brett, Lorna. Brett?
Brett.
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 Brett Lorman. I also want to take a moment and recognize a really special student, a special commendation. Some of you may have seen this essay published, Julian Harwood shared a message that was entitled, "Please Don't Tell Me I Look Like a Runner." That was recently published in the brochure Eagle and also shared on our athletic site of our webpage. And Julian, in fact, was a passionate essay about struggles with body image, with eating disorders, and with looking like an athlete or being told an athlete shouldn't play for different sports. And I think she does a great job of sharing her experiences and then offering some really actionable suggestions for folks to praise performance or praise strength and output rather than what athletes look like, what they should look like according to society's preconceived ideas about particular athletes for certain sports. So I was really touched to read her piece in the Eagle. I just wanted to make sure that we took a moment to offer a special commendation or coverage and share her story. This Wednesday night, from five to seven o'clock, we also have a science fair at Morris Elementary School. Our students have been working very hard to put together their presentations for the science fair. And we welcome all the community to come and join us on Wednesday evening from five to seven at Morris. And in exciting news, after the break, we also are hoping to welcome a new website for the school district. Our director of technology, Mary Cloud, has been working extensively on building and designing a new website along with a vendor that's helping us to do this work. And so it's School Messenger, we use to do our school messaging services. So we should have a modern, functional website that's easy to use, easy to navigate. Again, as you spend some time with that new website, should you have any additional enhancements, please send them our way. We're always looking to make the website better, make it more user-friendly. And again, it's really true to be a resource for families that is meaningful and easy to use. So that's it for the highlights and recognitions. The next item on my report is a field trip request. And I see that Dr. Weaver is here with us, and I would imagine that he's here to speak about this request, which is the Odyssey of the Humanities, so to speak. So, Dr. Weaver, why don't you share with us what you have in store?
Sure. Sorry for my tired, I'm helping coach tennis. My whole team is undefeated and playing. So it's our usual, I usually come here to talk about any trips that go out of state. So it's what was, has been the human interest trip to New York City. We cannot go because vaccination is required in New York. So we are going to do an in-state, partially in-state trip, partially out-of-state. That's going to go to Northampton, Massachusetts, to the Smith College Museum of Art to see Maya Lynn. There's an exhibition of her work. We study her as part of contemporary art. You know her as a memorial designer, I'm sure, but she's kind of has had a famous career after that. Her mother happened to be a Smith College graduate, so she was involved in redesigning the museum. Some of you may have seen that written up. It's considered a kind of landmark renovation architectural work. So we hope to tour that if possible. I have librarians working on it. I'm trying to get an M at the library and see this in there. And her current exhibit there is kind of interesting for us because it's about the intersection of environment and art, environmental kind of critique and art, but also a lot of the art is itself connected to the environment somehow. So we'll do that. Students will have a lunch there, and then we'll continue on to a larger collection at the Wattsworth Atheneum in Hartford. And if you all know it, but it has a pretty, kind of a gem of a museum. It covers our curriculum very well from modern through contemporary. And it's part of the final exam for that course for humanity. So we will be there with students for the afternoon, and then hopefully we'll have a dinner there. That's the only cost associated for students, and it would be that for that dinner. There's usually, we try to keep it at about $20 to $25. Reasonable, and if students cannot meet that, we tend to have funds available. So otherwise, museums are free.
You might just actually sit down because we're losing, we're only getting.
Actually, I like it better. So there's a cost for the coach, but that's the cost covered by the school. Yeah, and that's, we like that Wattsworth collection. I don't know if anyone knows it in the Atheneum, but fortunately JP Morgan was born in Hartford, so he donated enormous amount of his collection to the Wattsworth, and it's particularly strong in contemporary art. So there's a number of really important contemporary artists who quite didn't credit diverse collection for that reason. So we have, one of the highlights for us is the work of Kendall Wiley, who you know, who did the Obama portraits, but he's famous for lots of other stuff. They have a number of his works that are exquisite. We really like it because it really diversifies the humanities curriculum, something we're always trying to do. So we look forward to it. Any questions?
No question. So does changing the venue, how do you think that will affect the experience? Or does it change the student's assignment in any way?
Yeah, so there's, instead of one museum and a play, they're getting two museums. So that's, that's going to change. Usually we have a kind of component of the experience that's theatrical because we do theater back to ancient Greek. So that's changing what we do, and there's probably no way around that in the near future, given for folks in the theater business. And it's just, you know, it's different just in terms of the scale of New York for students. And we have students who've never been to New York that we take. So I think that's a really important, you know, we have lots of students who've been there many times. So I think it's kind of a watershed event for a lot of our students in the past to get sent to New York as a different kind of experience. So, you know, we're starting to lose that. In terms of the curriculum and that kind of things that we cover, it's, other than the theater component, it's pretty, you know, pretty similar to what we would do. You know, things that MoMA has, there's equally good examples of those at both of those museums. So in terms of that, the assignment will stay very similar. Students have to do a final exam for the class, so they can't get out of it, no matter how well they do. So that's part of going on the trip is you deliver or take home final exam to us, and that will stay very similar. Both to critique the class and to critique the idea of studying the humanities and their value and looking at contemporary works of humanity. So that will stay, our exam and that kind of stuff will, and writing will stay very similar.
I do know that I recently just had conversations with some of your graduates, who I'm very close with, who talk about some of their first experiences in being in Broadway and going to a Broadway play because it's very inaccessible these days. And we talk about the access to local theater.
Yes.
Proctors is often a good one, too, because when we think about cost and transportation, unfortunately, with most theaters, we are requiring vaccination and proof of it as we scramble to go to the footnotes for parents this weekend. But, you know, hopefully we can move forward to adding some theater. And maybe there is the opportunity to be more creative and look at places like Proctors or theater in Hartford or even Boston, if for some reason that makes it. But, you know, New York is great. I think the theater situation, although maybe we had access at some point to tickets that were allocated specifically for students.
But in matinees, so it's like other places, you just can't get the same kind of matinee experience. Usually you can get theater, but it's at eight o'clock or it's at, so it's again negotiating, you know, coming back from Boston. Which we've done, we know we've done that, personal jobs in the past, having a play that runs that late and coming back that late. But then having that trip run on Friday so that it spills into the weekend and, you know, thinking about conflicts, you know.
Yeah.
Either there are, there are some places, I know Shakespeare Company does not require, they require just a test, right? So theaters move in that direction, which I've heard from some people, that might be the case, that really rapid tests for students, which, you know, we do that as part of the pool testing. So that's maybe something we have an opportunity to add, so yeah.
Well, thank you for being creative.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is great.
Yeah, it's a great trip.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the humanities field trip as presented by Dr. Weaver.
Seconded.
Will be further questions? Okay, we'll call for a roll call vote. Orin Cass?
Orin Cass, aye.
Bob Munch, aye.
Christine Morrow, aye.
Veronica Fenton, aye.
Bob Juan, aye. Thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah, we may have a few more that I've come back before. Hopefully we'll have a few more there. I think mostly right now they're all in-state, but there's some stray beyond board.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. I appreciate Dr. Weaver's creativity and communication throughout this. Difficult to find places that will meet the needs of our students without barring gifts from attending. It's really important to us to pick places that everyone has access to, so not an easy feat by any stretch. Moving on, number three on my list here is the presentation of the proposed district calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. So in your packets, you should have a calendar. And Amy and I have been working to revise this up until very recently here. You'll notice some of the key features of the calendar is that we've eliminated the half-days, which was something that was really important to folks and the administrative staff. And I think the teachers share the same idea that it's very difficult to get meaningful instruction in the half-day and meaningful professional development in half-day. So it felt like we were kind of losing a boat then. So we really strove to try to utilize full days of those things. Also being sensitive to the needs of working families and difficulties that half-days posed to them as well as we scramble and try to get childcare arrangements. So you'll notice that we have a tentative first day of school. And the rest of the calendar and holidays, Steve, is in years past. There any questions about the calendar as it's proposed?
So where did, where did, I don't really see it on the calendar anymore.
There's one day.
One day, yeah.
So right now, we're in negotiations of where it will actually fall. It's a little bit up in the air. And we do have the date for the county YPD on the calendar.
Okay, I'm going to do it. So I have a question. I think I know the answer. So we have April 7th as a standalone. We mark it as a day off. I think typically it has coincided with a day that we call off for those who celebrate Easter as Good Friday. I have had a longstanding position that I think we have a robust and strong policy around religious exemption days for people who celebrate other holidays. And I think that we should not carve that out. Sometimes it falls within our school vacation, and it feels like it's an opportunity for people to get a jump on a holiday. In this case, it's a standalone because of the way the calendars work. Often, we also have Passover that happens close to that time, but we don't take any official school time off for that. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we eliminate April 7th as a, as a day off from school, but really honor what we have in our policies to respect those who wish to take religious services on that particular day, and that we not carve out a specific day or that a lot of people actually don't, you know, and I'm not going to comment on how people celebrate their religious holidays because there's lots of them that people will choose to honor in their own way. But I don't think we should be choosing a specific day such as April 7th.
The only concern I might have on that is it might be in the contract. The date, I don't have a concrete for me, but I know that that has been an issue in the past. It has been in the teacher's contract. To identify it as Good Friday as a day off, I think so. But I think again, I have to ballpark.
Really is, again, and I'm talking about this in some other contexts early in the year around COVID in particular, but that it could result in, for lack of a better term, a functional closure and/or a tremendously disruptive day if we have a high number of teachers exercise there. Right? Take a rule to stay that day, coupled with high absences amongst the students. And so then effectively, not much will happen because no one wants people to miss out on something that's going to be pivotal in their learning sequence. And so the day in some way either becomes a forced closure or, you know, it's a wash in terms of the quality of the day. So that's the only other side of that, you know, argument.
Yeah, could I just ask a clarifying question? If I recall correctly, we had this same discussion when the calendar was presented last year. And I think Ronnie raised the same concern and Bob and Mark and others. I think someone from the LEA maybe also explained the reasons why we really thought it made sense to have it be a day off. And the committee decided to keep it as a day off. So I guess I just want to understand, has anything changed or are we just having that exact same discussion?
Well, I don't know if it's an exact same discussion. I think that the raising of question about how we handle religious holidays is always a question that's important for me to ask anyway. So I bring it up because I think it's important. If other people don't agree, I understand. That's why, that's why we have the committee we have. So I'm bringing it up because I think it's important that we recognize that there are people taking days off of school and missing school for other important religious holidays. And that the way that we should function as a public school is not to choose one religious holiday over another. I mean, that's, to me, that's, it's not a national holiday. It's not a state holiday. It is, for some religions, even one that they don't honor on that day. Christians celebrate it in different ways that don't require them to miss school, but other people choose to spend that day in a way that's religiously focused, and that's fine. And we have that in our policies. We have in our policies that if people choose to take a religious day, they can and they should. And we honor that. We respect that. So I think that's consistency within our policies between what we say about religion and how we incorporate in our calendar. Are we then at least able to verify what's in the contract? Searching, but. And this year, you know, it's possible, since it's just the first presentation, we're going to make a decision to, you know, thread the calendar sort of policy-wise, because it's kind of a policy, right? And then you're still working on the professional development days, and some days may need to move anyways. Negotiation, am I incorrect about that? Okay. Said it backwards. Am I correct about that? So we could certainly take this, take this up at the next meeting, giving time to review the contract. And then take, we typically do take a vote on the calendar by the poll.
Maybe this is the seat.
Would you be comfortable, Mr. Vaughn, if I if I move to table this to our next meeting?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know. Yeah, there's just no vote to accept it anyway.
Okay, yeah.
It's just a thought. It was just a draft, the first that the first reading of the of the calendar. We do need to get it two weeks, so.
Any other questions to use the calendar? See, no, we'll move on and um, again, offer a party, there's a gratitude to Amy and Bitski who um, spent a lot of time working together. Four men, this is the only task, so. A marvelous job of that and I think a layout very visually tracked and used it that way. I wish I made it as simple as possible, so. Um, next on my report is a update on kindergarten and pre-kindergarten enrollment. Um, and so for pre-kindergarten, um, we held screenings on March twenty-second and March twenty-third. Uh, and we've accepted and filled fourteen slots. Um, so we have a total of twenty-four students. Three open spots are reserved in each class for um, pre-chorales. Um, and they had been in touch with us to let us know that there's potentially three for once coming on waiting list. So maximum in each class would be fifteen students. Uh, we have six students coming on the waiting list. Letters to all families um, went out on April seventh. So we had a very robust response to um, to pre-K, less interest in that. Similarly, in kindergarten, uh, our leadership moment numbers are thirty-one students um, for next year's kindergarten class. That includes sixteen students that are moving up from our existing pre-K class this year. To be joined by fifteen other friends for next year. Uh, we do have screenings coming up for kindergarten as well. Uh, June fourteenth, that day is reserved for those sixteen uh, existing pre-K students who are moving up to kindergarten. And then on June sixteen, seventeen and twenty-first, Lennox residents, the school choice students, um, will have screenings for kindergarten as well. Sorry.
Um, Dr. Boslin, next question. Did you say that six students are on the waiting list for preschool or sixteen?
Six.
Six.
As of last count, you can change the name, but that's that's the least.
And can you just describe how you, what happens with the six students on the waiting list? So when you said we have the three reserves from the PTC?
Yep.
Sorry. And so that's, though there are six slots accepted PTC, it's the PTC, Pediatric Development Center, right? So potentially a number of those students will be accepted into the pre-K, the six waiting lists.
Um, well, you know, it will depend. I mean, like I said, we already have pretty robust numbers, so um, if students elect to um, do some other um, or find similar solution for pre-K, um, you know, it's possible to be able to go to the waiting list and fill it on, you know, on a um, as first one versus basis and or if there's the need of a time breaker, we'll go random lottery to assign seats. Um, we also are looking um, begin to to try to allow those students in if we have that space. Um, and sometimes we also have students who may relocate prior to the school year. So uh, sometimes there's some movement, but really it's a year to year kind of decision um, as to how that works, but um.
And is the, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is a fifteen classroom size um, pretty held fast or is there because of the age and the nature of the schooling, et cetera, is there not much ability to expand that to up to sixteen or?
Yeah, there is really not too much moving there and that's really, I think, pushing us to um, about our our max capacity in terms of personality in our space. Um, and again, remember that this is a unique program that um, is a inclusive preschool um, offering. And so we do have some students that have um, you know, significant needs, and so we want to make sure they were um, adequately able to meet that in addition to the needs of students without um, IEPs or individualized education plans.
Thank you.
The incoming kindergarten class, do you know how many were residents versus choice?
Uh, I don't have that number at my fingertips. Um, I can certainly get that, get it back to you or the hanging my other hair, so I'm just sorry.
We have a potential of thirty. I think we have twenty-seven confirmed residents.
Okay.
And um, the potential for thirty.
Yeah, I thought thirty was a number that we were talking about.
Yeah, and we don't have registration paperwork for all thirty, but we feel pretty confident that we will get those last week. Okay, that's great.
Yeah, I had the number, yeah. We had at least thirty inquiries of folks who say they'd want.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That's great.
Uh, and that's also um, almost spot on with the projections that we got from ESBC, uh, where they said that we were looking at having uh, a future enrollment bump. So it may already be hitting us um, in our um, early learning slots. So we're excited to see that. Um, the next item on my report is um, just an overview of some of our end of the year events. Um, in any school district, end of the year is really exciting time. Uh, we have a host of events um, that are coming up, pretty many. The band concert tonight, the science fair, um, LMHS, um, students are putting on a performance of a very um, lofty ambition and putting together a high school musical for Into the Woods, which is a big play. So um, they are looking to perform that on um, April twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Uh, the showtimes of seven PM both evenings and a one PM matinee um, at Duffin Theater. Uh, Special Olympics will be held um, at Monument High School um, for um, students with special needs and that will be on um, May the fourth. Uh, also on May the fourth, um, that evening, uh, Morris is hosting a an event called Books Before Bed. Um, where um, folks will read um, a picture book and then offer a activity for students um, to help build their level of literacy. Uh, and so we're really excited about that. Um, I was asked to anticipate this event and I couldn't have been more excited. Um, and so I've been uh, working on planning my own lesson plan um, to share with students that evening as well. Um, we have an eighth to twelfth grade band concert um, coming up on um, May the twelfth. And then of course, one of the major crown jewels at the end of the year, um, the prom will be held um, on May the twentieth at the stables of the mound. Um, so memorated space at the mound and so uh, folks are really excited to um, have a prom this week's face. That would be from seven to ten on the twentieth. Uh, we have a field trip coming up for eleventh graders and some field trips coming up for some of our younger students. Um, we also have an art auction performance for National Art Honor Society, um, May twenty-fifth.
All right, would you say art auction?
Yes, art auction um, and performances. And that'll be five to nine on the evening of twenty-fifth. Um, twenty-fifth is a busy day in the district. We also have an open house for incoming kindergartners uh, at Morris. That'll be a six o'clock evening. So both schools will be alive and and um, full of energy that evening. On the the next night, the twenty-sixth, um, we have a field trip for corporate humanities. Um, and that evening, we also have the first county educator recognition event. So superintendents across the region through our roundtable got together and um, talked about having a night to come together. Um, you know, the Tonys or the Emmys uh, and have an award event for our educators. And so uh, every district is um, nominating teachers in a variety of categories um, to be honored that evening. That'll be at NCLA's Murdock Call at four thirty.
And that's May twenty-sixth.
That's May twenty-sixth.
Wow.
And then in June, we have a class day on June eighth, um, at one o'clock at Duffin. Scholarship night the next day on um, June the ninth, at six thirty in Duffin. Also on the ninth, at six thirty in Morris, uh, another one of these doubleheader evenings for us. Um, you know, spring art show and of course a band concert at Morris.
That's June ninth also.
That's June ninth also. Very next morning after that night, we have field day at Morris. So again, one of the highlights are the elementary students in their end of the year festivities. Um, June the twelfth, we have graduation. That'll be at one o'clock at Tanglewood. June the fourteenth, we have a mid-school concert, seven o'clock at Duffin. The twenty-first of June, um, we have a free aid celebration and a mid-school dance. The twenty-second, we have our move-up ceremony for fifth graders at Morris. And then across the musical, which we talked about earlier, um, that's at one o'clock. And then some field trips for each of the grades at Morris at the end of the school year. So um, kind of a quick run through of some of the major events that are coming our way. Uh, we'll make sure that we also um, post these um, so that uh, parents have a easy place to find all of those because there's a lot of information. Um, a lot of events printed into just a a few months' time. So uh, but we're really excited and we're really excited to, I think, re-engage some of these events in person. Um, I know that that's something that um, I talked to students who missed out on that. You know, they really regret not being able to anticipate some of those key elements of the physical experience. So we're excited to bring those back. And then the final um, item that I have in my report this evening is just a brief overview of our summer programming. So um, with COVID, we started to offer summer programming in our schools and um, in many ways, we feel that uh, it's been one of the things that we learned that's a really great takeaway from COVID. And so Morris will offer a summer program. Um, they have two sessions. They're two weeks each for students K through five. Uh, they'll be five days a week. Um, and they're looking at having twenty-five students in the first session, which will run from um, July eighteen to July twenty-nine and thirty-three students um, in session around the first two weeks of August. Uh, so lots of interest. Uh, again, that was a great program last year. Uh, I had opportunity to come and spend some time watching students um, reading, writing, learning about uh, the world. I saw a letter about the rainforest of Brazil one day. The kids were just super excited about um, the multimedia exploration at that day. Uh, there's also a chance to play outside and so um, it's a nice overall event for students to support a whole child. And then LMHS is offering Jump Start once again, although it's going to be slightly different. This will be for uh, our rising sixth graders. So students who are transitioning from fifth grade at Morris to sixth grade at LMHS, who have either an IEP or a five oh four, um, will have a um, special opportunity to come together and uh, get ready for high school. And so that's still in the works, um, being planned. Uh, it was just actually scheduled for today, so I'm excited to learn more about that program. And then LMHS is also offering a VHS course, that's a virtual high school course in Algebra Two, uh, which is critical for our students to be able to uh, take the highest level in maths. Uh, and that will be offered to students in grades nine to ten. Um, it's a self-paced course that will take place somewhere between um, June fifteenth and August twelfth. That'll be five days a week and they're looking at roughly fifteen students um, to take that summer um, kind of jump start from math to uh, fill in some of the gaps with Algebra Two. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Wait, and it would be possible for you to link that end of year events to the minutes?
Absolutely.
Yes, I made enough to do that.
I'll share with Amy as we speak.
Yeah, because I mean, I am all types of those written down here, but you better, yeah.
I'm very excited to hear all those events. I'm really into that, I hear things about speed now.
Yeah, that's really great. Yeah, yes.
Excited to be back at Tanglewood. Congratulations. It's very special. We're really fortunate.
And I guess we'll cross most of this also on our social media so that, you know, families also know where to find some information.
Okay, um, so moving down to subcommittees and.
Can I jump in on a business that has to do with an accolade and then an event? Um, accolade from my point of view is I got messages from some of the LMHS teachers and I think it was in conjunction with some community members. There was a gathering of prom attire, so suits, ties, dresses, accessories, whatever could be gathered. I found a few and brought them there. Um, for students, I arrived and dropped my things off the day of the sale and it was five dollars, I think, for items. So student is very accessible for students. And there was a flurry of activity and um, students seemed very excited. I think both from a point of view of being reading, you know, and thinking carefully budget-wise and otherwise about the costs of prom and also being excited about being able to do this in a way that was, you know, financially savvy. There was a lot of stuff there. There were teachers, so um, I know it was Karen Legay and um, Alexa, thank you, um, who reviewed it, who were my point of contact. I saw other people there that were involved, so I don't want to leave anyone out. But I just think that was exciting. I was aware of some of that happening up in Pittsfield and did not know that it was happening here and was able to, you know, donate a little of it to them a little here. So I felt really good about that. Um, you know, many people, you know, there's a lot that goes into creating these prom looks, but then it sits in the closet. So it's really great for students to be able to both think thrifty and have access to fun outfits. So I'm excited for that. Um, so I wanted to shout out for that because I think that was a great effort. It's all done after school and at St. Anne's Church. That's great. Um, the second thing is that I am, I'm signed up and this is a local education opportunity. So I'm putting it up like for parents. It's, it is open to the public. Um, it's called Hard Conversations in Safe Places and it's a conversation opportunity um, sponsored. So it's in partnership with the Northbound School District, the Pittsfield Education Foundation and the NAACP. The Pittsfield Public Schools are presenting a community conversation and training hosted by Dr. Frances Jones Sneed, Dr. Leticia Haynes, and I can send you the link, um, Dr. Boslin, and Dr. Eden Renee Hayes of Williams College, as well as Akilah Edgerton of Berkshire School. And there's a registration link and it's at Halden Taconic High School. And it's, it's, I think, from at six o'clock on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, the thirteenth. But it's a great opportunity to engage across district, across communities and have access to professors who will talk a lot about how do we have difficult conversations. Um, some of it's about language that we hear in schools that can be considered harmful and how do we talk about it? How do we um, you know, engage with one another when things get difficult? So it's maybe the, you know, and I think it's it's geared towards anyone, but I think it's for parents to be able to have those conversations. And it's, like I said, across district and everyone's invited. You do have to register in advance because I think there's some concern about over-enrollment. So um, I can certainly give you that link. And as I said, you can go to, I found the link and I couldn't find it in my calendar at NAACP. It's also on Facebook. Um, it'll also be on Pittsfield Public Schools because they're responsible. So there's some places you can find it.
Ron, can you send me some more to describe this?
I will.
I can't talk as fast or type as fast as we can.
I know, right? It's it's my, it's my challenge, right? But I can send you the link. I'll send it to you and Dr. Boslin. Thank you. And anyone who wants it can reach out to me and I'll, I'll share it.
Yeah, and I wanted to just follow the accolades that you were giving relative to the uh, the work that the art department is doing with the prom stuff. I think we all get the newsletter, the arts newsletter um, from uh, it's Karen Romeo Legay sends it to us. Keegan Farr is the one who designs it. Um, it has been, well, A, the extraordinary works that the kids do just blows my mind. Um, but I think it's a great way of keeping us uh, in the loop on a lot of the things that are going on in that whole music, art, um, woodworking department and seeing uh, some examples of the great work kids are doing. And it's just a number of the many ways kids express themselves in in high school, middle and high school. And um, and I really am thankful that that Ms. Romeo Legay has been sending that to us, keeping us in the loop.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to subcommittees. Head of government's wish she's been a while. Human Resources continues our work and I know that the last one is suggesting somehow that we might have a separate meeting for Human Resources is going to be in negotiations. So the article by the trade event, which is hopefully coming to fruition soon. Um, teaching, learning and culture.
We had a meeting on April sixth and our next meeting is on May fourth and fourth, you with me? Um, and um, so we had to get a number of items and they took up quite a time. We we met for quite a while. Um, talking about accessibility tutors, how do we provide that within the school and provide academic support for students who are struggling? Talking about accessibility to tutors, how do we provide that within the school and provide academic support for students who are struggling? How do we share information for parents who want resources outside of, of school, so we had a pretty good conversation about that. It was a conversation about the Canvas interface and then our switch to, and, and there needed to be some understanding on how we got to Canvas, which as we all know is done. Very quickly to get people up and running and then what does it mean for going forward and supporting. Platforms that both teachers can work with and that are accessible to families and not having a different platform and a different format for every. Class, that conversation's ongoing, because as Dr. Baslin just announced, we're in the midst of a change in our website. And there's a number of changes that are happening, so that conversation will continue, but with an eye toward. Creating a little bit more uniformity for family and student access, but enabling teachers to use their learning that they've already done and not have to scrap a lot of work that they've done. So there's some good conversation around that, conversation about supporting students and have some type of a homeroom access. That's ongoing, but Dr. Baslin and Mr. Knibl were able to talk about some of their ideas about how do we have a touch point for students when they're in the building. That's beyond just announcements, you know, that kind of thing. And we talked about access to buses for after-school, since so many students do avail themselves of after-school help. There's teachers that are very committed to providing help for students after school, but sometimes access, if it's not buses. And also students want to do clubs and other activities and how do we, we didn't have an answer, but we talked about whether or not that was something we could think about more creatively. An ongoing conversation about sports, interest classic sports, we're still in that testing phase of what's happening with the new leagues. And how that's impacting, so there's commitment to ongoing, some of it is touch points, getting more explanation about how this is working and what are our next decision-making parts of that. And I think that's all we got to, we, we really, we did a long meeting, so our next one will be May 4th.
A lot on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, finance will be meeting again, I believe, in early May. School Building Committee, we have engaged the services of DRA Architects. To do an engineering study in high school, we met on. I think it was the 25th of, of, of March and going to hire them to do the work. They are actively engaged in the process with the idea that we will have a. Final report on April 22nd, which gives us a week to write statements of interest. Using the, whatever information comes out of that report. At our next meeting, which is April 20.
April 30?
Twenty fifth.
Forty, oh, this meeting?
The next meeting.
This group, yes.
April 25th. We will have prepared the document that we need to vote on to approve the submittal of the SOI. I've already spoken to the selectmen, they will arrange for a, a meeting if we, if we have it. If we haven't got it prior to the 25th, during that week, they need to vote, it's a very efficient, it's a, it's a process, it's a very. Prescribed process that we have to. Follow exact, exact procedures. So one of the important things that we'll be talking about on the 25th will be that SOI document, we'll have it ready. You know, I'm actually going to do that at 9:00 tomorrow. Subject to the school building, we have a chance to talk about it on. It will be 14th, I think it is.
Yes.
Do you anticipate having a report on the 14th or?
No, 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 but I'm gonna fill in what I can, because it doesn't look like we necessarily have to have all the. We have to put our priorities in that document, we may not have to have in some detail, but not the, the full thing. So I'm gonna draft it and see what it looks like and see if it, if it seems like we're missing stuff, we'll only come from the report or if we're good to go without it. So that's where we are. So that's why I've accepted motion to.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, call for roll call vote or?
Or in cast, I.
Munch, I.
Christian Mara, I.
Ron, that's an I.
Ballon, I, we are adjourned.